Well, good evening, folks. It is six o'clock and it is Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We are in the council chambers for the city of Platteville, and I'm calling the regular meeting of the common council to order. Candace will start with roll call.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Ken Killian.
There.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Kathy Kopp.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Lynn Parrott. Todd Casper.
Here.
Hey, the first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation about financial advising services. So, Adam?
I will take it away, yeah. So this is the continuation of obviously the request for proposals that we did for the financial advisor services. So just to remind everybody kind of that process during pretty much July, we went out for a request for proposals, looking for firms that essentially would be interested in providing financial advisement to the city of Platteville. Currently, right now, our municipal advisor is Ellers. So we also sent that information to them and encouraged them obviously to resubmit to be considered. We had three firms that essentially provided us with proposals. That was Baker Tilly, Ellers, and Robert W. Barrett. What happened then is a subcommittee was formed with council members Nichols and Killian, as well as city staff, which was Director Mauer and myself, where we reviewed the three proposals, actually did first round interviews with all three of those. And then that committee essentially made recommendations then to the council to kind of go to the next step, which was to have the two finalists, which was Barrett and also Ellers, come in front of the council and be able to present. So that is what is going to be happening here during the two meetings here in September. We're going to have each firm kind of come. What you will see in the council packet is you were provided with the proposal that was done by Robert W. Barrett. And each firm, we asked them to provide us with a sample of a financial management plan. So that has been in here. And so now what we want to do was have an opportunity for Robert W. Barrett, who is represented tonight by Justin Fisher, who is at the podium, to have an opportunity to kind of present some of the information that was given to the subcommittee. So that way, the rest of the council members can hear it. And then obviously, there'll be an opportunity to answer any kind of questions back and forth, and we'll go from there.
Well, welcome, Justin.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and thank you, Adam, for the introduction. This is great to be here. One, I've been looking for this opportunity. I think I met with Adam back in early 2020, Adam and Nicola, with one of my colleagues on this page here, Emily Timmerman, where we expressed our interest to continue working with Adam because my relationship with Adam goes back many, many years. I first started work with Adam when he was at Hobart, where we started looking at different TID pro formas and helping him out in that area. And then when he went to Marshall, I was hired to begin working with them on all aspects of financial planning, TID creations, amendments, et cetera. So obviously, you know, I, when he came here, I have a deep sincere, because I value the relationships I I share with my clients. You know, I kind of, I've told this in the committee, you know, I view my clients as my family. I care deeply, as I was just telling Nicola, staying up late at night as the, as you continue to watch these financial markets kind of in turmoil right now and, you know, trying to figure out what the best plan of action is for my clients because the interest rates are moving very quickly right now. They aren't like the last couple of years where we kind of knew interest rates were going to stay low and be low for a period of time. And now you have to be a little bit more strategic in how you go about your planning because you can't just send it out for bids and get multiple bids and they're all, you'll get the same interest rate as a community next door, even though you have a better bond credit rating. It's just a very, it was a crazy time the last couple of years, and we're in a different period, different stage right now. So a little bit background about myself. I actually grew up in Wanakee, just outside of Madison. So, you know, born, raised in Wisconsin. And, you know, our headquarters for Baird nationally is in Milwaukee. So we're a Wisconsin-based company where we have thousands of employees in Wisconsin working for, for the company in all different areas of, you know, private wealth management, asset management, all sorts, as well as public finance is what, you know, I'm part of. So, you know, it would be a thrill for, for me to continue to work with Adam and also start building relationship with, with the city and look at the long-term planning and come up with some good strategies on how to get you to where your future goals want to be. So in, you know, kind of looking at what I passed around, I don't want this to be necessarily me up here presenting. I'd love to field any questions specifically you have of me. But some of the key areas that I do want to bring up that we talked about in the committee was one, you know, our, our TID consulting and amendments, creations, pro forma analysis, that those, that's an area where I spend about half my time. Half my time is on the debt planning, capital improvement planning, financial management, that type of stuff, debt issuance, as well as then on the other fifty percent, the TID side things. They kind of go hand in hand, right? Because a lot of the TID tax increment districts require some kind of incentive package, whether that's going to be through debt borrowing. Ideally, it's not, but you know, for infrastructure, it may require it. The other part is pay-as-you-go financing, which is a little bit more upfront by the developer. Obviously, that's the route I would always have my clients select to reduce borrowing and not put as much skin in the game for, for them. But there are times when it is necessary in order to get the project to come to your community. So I've worked with, you know, on some of the most successful tax increment districts in the state where I've been asked to present on those tax increment districts numbers of times. Adam's probably sick of hearing it at, you know, city manager conferences and GFOA and all that other stuff. But, you know, I have been, had the privilege and honor to work on a lot of those successful tax increment districts and economic development projects throughout the state of Wisconsin. I've also, yeah, I serve as municipal advisor to the Wisconsin Center District, which is, you know, in the news a lot, which you probably don't know about. But they're the ones that ultimately were the issuers for the new Milwaukee Bucks Arena because they required that public money side of the equation. So they selected me and Baird to represent them. And we've been working with them for a number of years. And then most recently, the convention center expansion downtown Milwaukee, which is going to be about a $450 million project. So I bring some pretty large base projects, but I also work with small communities like Fenimore, right down the road. So, you know, I treat every client the same, no matter how big or small. I bring my expertise in kind of the biggest that we've seen in Wisconsin to some of the smallest. And in every situation is going to be different about how we go about funding projects. And that's what ultimately gets me excited about my job because there's no one route. Regardless, the last two years, yeah, that was a different time period where, you know, a strategy which a lot of my clients chose was, you know, we know rates are low. They're probably going to, you know, increase. We anticipated starting at the end of last year, kind of early this year, because the Fed was artificially keeping things pretty low. That was going to end at a certain point, and it has. And so one of the strategies, you know, a lot of my clients did was said, okay, we know we have a long-term capital improvement plan, a five-year CIP. We know we have these projects. Do we want to potentially borrow for this year and next year's where the project's at? If we can get one percent, one and a half percent type financing for these projects? Or do we just borrow for, on an annual basis? You know, borrow this year, borrow next year and see where interest rates end up. You know, you may not know what your bids are going to look like, so you may take a certain route. But there are some of the, the clients that wanted to lock in, especially some of the larger projects that they have, to be able to lock in that lower interest rate because of the fear of rates going up in the future. Not for everyone, but so, you know, that was some things that we brought to their attention, knowing that we're in the market every day and that's what we do. And we had a pretty good understanding that rates were going to go up. Now, we didn't know how much, we didn't know how fast. But we knew that that was probably the historic low, and it was. So those are the type of strategies I can, I can absolutely bring to, to the city. The other thing is because of our network nationally, and we have public finance offices all throughout the country. We're not just in Milwaukee or Wisconsin. We have them all over the country. We have, you know, a hundred of us plus scattered throughout the country that are communicating constantly with each other. And we have connections to local and national banks that may be very interested in purchasing your debt, your bonding, if presented the opportunity. You know, one of those opportunities is Fenimore. You know, you have a strong local bank presence in the area. And do you, you know, is it important to the city to be able to include them in, you know, bond offerings or even what's called where we, you know, it may be a short-term financing, couple of years, nothing where we need to go off the public market and take on that issuance cost, maybe something a little bit more quick, short, no rating fee, all this other stuff, bid it out to local and national banks. You may get right around the same interest rate as you would if you went to the public market. You know, those are the things that we are constantly evaluating. And a while ago, what you were getting about the same interest rate by going to the local banks. Are you getting that same rate? Not anymore. But there was times when that made sense, and those are the opportunities that I bring to the group to say, hey, here's the opportunity. Which route do you want to go? And by the way, with the local bank, I can get it to be callable, meaning you can prepay it anytime much earlier than a public market issue where they have a seven, you know, eight-year call feature. And then meaning you can't prepay it or refinance it for seventy-eight years. So those are the things that we're looking at and bringing to your attention for our clients. So I would say that, that's very, very unique in that we have that capability, whereas our our competitors do not because we were, we're a broker deal as well as a municipal advisor. So we have that ability. So, you know, on the back page of this handout, you know, these are just some of the, the, the projects, clients that I work with on a continuing basis. Obviously, you know, Oak Creek is probably one of the faster-growing communities in, in the state. You know, not necessarily a great comparison to, to the city of Platteville, but I wanted to bring it because, you know, I do work with them on these projects. I do see it. I do see a lot of different strategic ways to bring in developments. And I can bring that expertise to, to the city. The other one that we're creating right now, we're creating two tax increment districts for the city of Fort Atkinson, where, you know, they're looking to spur some development and growth in that, that area. I would say that's a better comparison to the, to the city of Platteville based on size and, you know, the, just kind of not necessarily being right next to a big city and struggling with that aspect of bringing in these big developments that you want. But you may not be able to offer the same incentive package as, say, in Oak Creek because of your location. You know, you're not next, right next to Madison or you're not right next to Milwaukee. So, you know, figuring out what's the best incentive packages and, and ultimately bringing it to your attention and running different cash flow pro formas that makes sense. Factoring in if you need to do the debt borrowing, how's that fit, factor in your geo-debt capacity policy? You know, what, what's the right mix of debt to Pago? You know, can we get away with all Pago-type financing? Those are the scenarios that I've run with Adam many, many times at Marshall and Hobart. And, you know, that's where I think I can really bring a lot of expertise to the city of Platteville in those things. And what my, our philosophy is, if you're our client, we're not going to charge a fee to do those pro forma analyses because I want you, Adam Nicola, to be calling me saying, hey, what if this, you know, or, you know, here's what the developer is now proposing, you know, can you run a cash flow pro forma and, you know, and let's maybe, and then, you know, do whatever you think is, is, is best for the negotiations to keep that going. I want that collaboration and I don't want to have to send you an invoice for that because ultimately what I do know is that the city of Platteville is going to do a debt borrowing eventually, whether it's this year, whether it's next year, or three years from now. That time will come, and at that particular time is when I will charge a fee for those services. So I, I welcome any questions.
Ken, you had a question?
Yes. Explain to me a blighted TID. Oak Creek.
Yeah. Do you want to know about that specific one that I'm thinking about or just a?
Do you want to know what a blighted TID is?
Yeah, no, it's, it's exactly what you kind of envisioned a blighted area would look like. Dilapidated, not necessarily the best area for, you know, other types of, put it this way, it's going to take some time for that area to grow and spur development. It may take some more time to get that particular infrastructure in place. Essentially, fifty percent of that area has to be considered blighted. And that's a, that's a gray area, but it's ultimately, you know, the eyeball test, doesn't make sense. And does your joint review board agree with it, you know, being considered a little bit of blighted area? The reason why a lot of communities use blight is because you are giving, given twenty-seven years a longer life to be able to recoup your expenditures made into that investment, that area. You know, if you, if you didn't need that extra time, many times you probably would do like a, a mixed-use district. But that gives you twenty years. So you have less time to recoup your expenditures, and that blighted area might take a little bit more time to get it to, to get that development that you envisioned.
Oh, what, what I see, for example, in Platteville, there could be a few places together, but they don't need that fifty percent.
That, that could be. It's all about the TID boundary that you create. And ultimately, though all, every parcel within the TID is going to get a notice saying, hey, your, your parcel property is being considered for a blight TID. And they may have something to say about that.
Justin, you've talked a lot about kids. You know that we're maxed out. We couldn't create a TID if we wanted to tomorrow.
Sure.
So tell me about why we should hire you. I mean, you've stressed how good you are at TIDs, but that's all, I mean, can't really do that.
No, but, but the pro forma analysis is where it makes the most sense. I do pro forma analyses for, say, Village of Kimberly. They can't create it.
Justin, maybe you could explain what a pro forma analysis is and why we would need one?
Yes, absolutely. So pro forma analysis is a cash flow analysis, meaning, say, you have a development that wants to come in. They're going to promise you $10 million in new development, right? But they want something to bring that $10 million project to your community. What is that? What's the right balance? Is it Pago-type financing? Do they want you to do some type of infrastructure financing? All of that is what I'm modeling to see what those debt service payments may look like, what that Pago payment structure looks like, as well as what the potential tax revenue of that new development will bring in. And can that revenue ultimately go to help support those, those Pago and infrastructure debt borrowing payments? And if it can, great. If it can't, we need to figure out a different solution.
So how does a pro forma, I mean, you do financial management plans. I see in your proposal that you do financial management plans on a annual basis?
We can.
Or more than annual basis?
No, I mean, we, we basically can keep the financial management plan updated throughout the year, however you would like. It's really not a big pull for, for our part because it all fits into your overall plan. If we're doing one piece, it kind of fits into that financial management plan. So it all kind of floats together. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, we, we do financial management plans for, you know, many communities, but we just don't do one thing or the other.
You would say that your strength is TIDs?
I would say it's just overall financial management planning. My expertise is actually is more on the, like, the, the capital borrowing side of the equation, figuring out how to get you, the community, to the lowest interest rates. And how do I do that? Right? There's all sorts of different routes I can go. There's, like I said, there wasn't, there is not one correct, always foolproof route to go. There's all sorts of different routes depending on what the borrowing looks like, the term structure, the, the prepayment feature that you want because maybe you've got a grant coming in, in the future, and you want to be able to pay off that loan earlier than eight years. You know, those are the things that I would say my expertise is. That's half of it, but the other half would be the TID side of the equation.
Other questions?
Shorewood Hills. It says at the bottom, we added one and a half miles of linear feet of new and reconstructed, reconstructed streets. Could you explain a little bit how Platteville might get those streets?
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it all depends on the tax increment district, the boundary. So if, if the streets are in that particular tax increment district or within even potentially a half mile, depending on how the project plan was set up. If you have tax revenues that are available and in excess of your expenditures, you may be able to put some of that money towards the different related projects in your project plan. You aren't restricted to necessarily just doing infrastructure for new developments. In your project plan, it should state that it can be funding other city goal-related projects, such as streets or park improvements or however, whatever else is in there. But the TID has to be successful enough to be able to support paying for those, those related projects.
Justin, can you walk through the council? And I think some of the questions they're also asking too is like projects that are outside of a TIF. So how does that, you know, obviously with Platteville, we've got, you talked about CIP, but then talk about the water utility, that kind of thing. You know, how does that, what are some of the services that Baird provides? Obviously, we're looking at that one if it's not necessarily in a TIF, but it's related to the water utility or projects or things like that. How does that all kind of wrap into?
Yeah. So the city has a five-year CIP, capital improvement plan, right? And so that, that gives me a lot to work off of, to be able to say, okay, here's what the city's anticipating from a capital expenditure standpoint on a yearly basis. I can then model that out, factoring in your geo-debt capacity policy, looking at your, your utilities to see, are you able to afford these potential future capital projects that you have coming down the pipeline? Is there something we need to do now to be able to prepare for that capital expenditure that may happen in two years, three years, et cetera? You know, that's what I do a lot of with, you know, my clients is, is really figuring out how their five-year CIP fits into their overall borrowing for, you know, pro forma analysis and then factoring in your geo-debt capacity. And also, what, what type of growth rates are you expecting and so forth? Trying to be conservative in one aspect, but also looking at it from a historical standpoint to say, you know, you've grown two, two and a half percent every year for the last twenty years. You know, let's maybe use that as a, as a potential growth factor versus zero percent or maybe a four percent for the next couple of years, depending on what you're seeing. So, yeah, we can absolutely model how, model it out however you want. But the five-year CIP ultimately gives me enough ammunition to be able to start the conversation and start the building out a long-term capital borrowing plan for the city. So you have a good idea. You know, here's what is coming down the pipeline. And that's where I can also say, you know, if we hit another market, which may not happen for a very long time, but if we get to a historically low interest rate environment, that's where I bring it to your attention to say, hey, you've got, you know, two and a half million dollars this year. You've got a million and a half dollars next year. You know, do we want to potentially look at borrowing for the $4 million to fund all the capital projects? If we can lock in at a one and a half percent interest rate for twenty years, you know? That's, that's the discussions that I have with, with you.
Any other folks with questions?
I mean.
Yeah. Under financial management on your front page, you have investment alternatives. Can you give some examples of what that might look like?
Yeah. So, so investment alternatives, what we would look at there is what, when you're holding the money from, from these bond proceeds? Because a lot of times you aren't spending the money day one. You're ending up with a pot of money that, you know, may be spent over a year period. It could be even longer in some cases, you know, looking at what are your options for getting you the highest return, but also watching certain state and federal requirements such as arbitrage and which Nicola is very familiar with. But, you know, looking at that to say, you know, here's the LGIP, which is a state program, you know, here's what, you know, other investment managers are going to potentially offer you from an interest rate and based on, you know, the different factors. Here's what, you know, probably makes the most sense based on your spend-down requirements for that particular proceed. We don't offer the investments because we, we view it as almost like a conflict of interest to, so we, we do not get into that business because we don't want to be seen as borrowing more money for you to be able to invest more and earn more. So we stay out of it.
Hey, other questions? I, I have one more question about TIDs. You say TID consulting services. I believe the last time we created a TID, and I'm going to have to look across at Joe and Howard. Did we not have an engineering firm do the TID project plan? Who did the TID project plans?
I suppose either Veerbeck or MSA.
Yeah, I thought it was Veerbeck or MSA. So are you, are you saying that you do that plan now, not an engineering firm?
We absolutely can. Yeah, we've created dozens of new tax increment districts, and that's what, exactly what we're doing for City of Fort Atkinson right now. We're doing it from Maguano. There's a handful of other ones that were in the process right now. But one item I would bring up is that, you know, when Maguano, they just hired me and Baird this year. They were using Ellers as the TID consultant. And they did receive a proposal for the creation of a new tax increment district. And that particular, you know, fee was about double what ours was. And so we are working with the, the village on their tax increment district right now. Not saying, you know, you obviously cannot create one, as you, as you mentioned. But, you know, when the, when it does come, come time, because there will be a time when you, your tax increment districts will close or amendment is made or something where you have the ability to potentially create one in the future.
So where do I find that in your cost proposal? Or was it in your cost proposal?
The tax increment district, I don't know if that was particular.
You know, it came up in the.
Was that the subcommittee?
The subcommittee, yeah.
But yes, $8,750 is what we are charging right now for TID creations, amendments, et cetera.
Annually or one time?
One time, one time.
I feel like $8,750, quarterly is a lot more than $8,750 one time or annually, so.
Yes. And like I said, we do not charge for the pro forma analyses that are tied to, to that and in the future.
So that would mean future pro formas. So you create a TID, tax increment district, $8,750.
For twenty-plus years potentially.
Right.
Running pro formas for you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else with questions? Okay, Justin, thank you very much for making the trip to Platteville. You've come to God's country, we believe, we know. We not only believe, we know.
Yes, it's beautiful here and what a beautiful day to be driving.
It was a beautiful day.
Yes. Well, thank you for your, your time. I really appreciate it.
All right. Well, thank you. All right, folks. I guess now we move into our regular type agenda. So the first thing on our agenda tonight is consideration of the consent calendar, and there are a number of things on it. There was an amended agenda, and I believe I have that. Yes, I do. So I will read from the most recent agenda. We have council minutes from August sixteenth and August twenty-third, regular and special meetings. We have payment of bills. We have the financial reports for August. We have the financial reports for August, appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight I'm appointing Joey Sconeover to the Commission on Aging. We have licenses tonight, the temporary Class B license to sell fermented malt beverages to Roundtree Gallery on Friday, September 23rd, 4:30 to 7:30 for the Prairie Light String Band. Temporary Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages again to Roundtree Gallery for October 7th, four to seven for the writing gesture shape art reception. A license to sell fermented malt beverages to Roundtree Gallery. Again, a Sunday, November 27th, 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. for the Artist's Sunday. Temporary Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages again to Roundtree Gallery for Friday, December 2nd, four to seven for the teeny tiny bold art reception. The addition of temporary Class B license to serve fermented malt beverage beverages to the Platteville J.C.'s at Legion Park for this coming Saturday, September 17th, from four to midnight for the tractor pull. We not only had to postpone the Fourth of July, but we had to postpone part of Dairy Days. The extension of premises for Los Amigos to include Main Street between Oak and Second Street on Saturday, September 17th for the Pyro Picnic from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. You might recall that that's about the glass blowing, okay? One and two-year operator licenses as included in your packet to serve and sell alcohol. The banner permit for the homecoming at UW Platteville to be hung October 1st to October 15th, a parade permit for the homecoming parade Saturday, October 15th. It's a 10 a.m. parade. We have the trick-or-treating hours Monday, October 31st, from 5:30 to 7:30. And Resolution 22-20, recognition of Kurt Witinski and Gail Sumi. Both of these individuals work with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Kurt has been both in the legislative relations area. Kurt was the lobbyist for forever and ever and and helped us immensely. Gail coordinated the League's legislative days in Madison, among other things. So those are the consent agenda items.
To approve consent agenda.
A second. We have a motion and a second Candace will vote. Cop, excuse me, cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next item on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And I would like to first start by saying what a wonderful weekend we had in Platteville. Incredible volunteers doing incredible work to bring us Dairy Days and the historic reenactment. And obviously some continuing for the week to 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 culminate Dairy Days. So congratulations and thanks to all.
Yeah, I think shout out to all of the, you know, volunteers that were involved in that. Also shout out to staff. I know we had some staff members put some long hours in, Eric in particular, working at the historic reenactment, and all the police officers kind of going back and forth. I know the library was rocking, obviously, with all the events going on. So again, just kudos to everybody. It was great to see, I mean, really, you know, being here now two years. Dairy Days is a all hands on deck approach from not only the Streets Department to the Parks Department to everybody getting everything set up. So, you know, how, you know, definite kudos go out to all of those city staff volunteers and, you know, the Dairy Days organization that puts on a pretty amazing event for not only our residents, but anybody in the community that wants to come down. So nice job.
Any other comments? Mr. Bob?
I was going to bring this up earlier last month, last meeting, but I wanted to do a shout out to Dr. Elizabeth Gates for all she does for the pools. She never asked for any recognition whatsoever. She made a nice donation that allowed us to, for our pool staff to actually provide reimbursement for all the certification first time ever. We were able to pay sign-on bonuses for the first time ever. We paid bonuses for the number of hours exceeding the regular hours, the number of lessons they were given. It made us really, so we could even be open this year, even though every pool and every committee struggles with getting attendance and lifeguards. We were able to do it. Sometimes it's tough, as these are young kids that are, you know, have many things going on in their life. But because of her donation, we were able to do it, and we were even able to extend normally. They look at closing the pool, you know, around August 20th to 25th in that area. We extended it all the way up till Friday before Labor Day and had our doggy dip day. And because of that, because of the bonuses we could pay, we actually were able to do that. So I kind of forgot to mention that before.
And 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 on your doggy dip day, I understand you had 77 doggies dipping.
77 doggies dipping there, yeah.
That was a new event for you, right?
Yes, yes, I was, I was a little reluctant when I heard about doggy dip day. And the feedback was, no, you got to have that. Okay, and big success. Glad I did.
Okay, so special thanks to Lizzie and Bob Gates and and to Bob and to the pool staff for a successful summer season. Okay, anybody else? Okay, then we'll move down to reports. There were several reports in your packet. Parks, Forestry and Recreation, Jason?
Nothing to add.
Lots of minutes there.
Yeah.
Tourism Committee, Lynn? Okay, Housing Authority Board, Eileen?
No additions.
Okay.
Sorry to bother you. I was going to ask something about the recreation.
Oh, back to the Parks, Forestry and Recreation Committee?
Yes. The pickleball court, I see some writings, some issue. What's wrong with the pickleball courts? First question. Second question, who was responsible for them being built last year? And then where are we sitting as a city in regards to what we're considering doing in terms of expending money on those, I guess?
I'm going to defer to the city manager, as most of that was, you know, way before I was hired. The only thing I can add is that we have been constantly meeting with engineer and Papa Group and, you know, concerned citizens. And we meet out there and try to get contractors to look at it. It was built, it's out of spec, but I am, you know, I am not an engineer. So I'm not going to necessarily comment about that. So I'm kind of going to let Adam handle it.
Yeah, so some of the discussion we've obviously had, or we continue to see is from a recreational standpoint, you probably would not know, you'd have a very hard time noticing a difference. The, what it comes down to is there in the specifications, so when we went out for bid, it was bid against the, don't quote me on this, but I believe it's the American Sports Association's, you know, rules and recommendations for what a pickleball court should look like from thickness to design to everything else. There is no question when this was completed that there are some issues with dips. So as far as, I mean, we're not talking huge dips, but we're talking noticeable where, you know, I believe the acceptable and the, again, is about like a quarter of an inch or three-fourths of an inch is standard, you know, across the entire pickleball court. Well, there's issues where it goes from, you know, three quarters, it goes to a half, it goes to an inch, and kind of back and forth in certain spots. And what that creates for more of the competitive pickleball players is you notice a difference where if, you know, if you're striking the ball and it hits one of those divots, it's going in a different direction and it's playing off. So there have obviously been numerous conversations back and forth. So what the city has done from our end is we actually have, we are still withholding the final payment from Owens, who is the contractor. The ultimate responsibility falls back on Owens as the contractor. So they have been working, obviously, with Delta Three, who is our engineering firm, in trying to figure out, okay, what are some, you know, possibilities, solutions? We continue to meet with Papa, who is the Pickleball Association, about trying to figure out, okay, what, you know, what are the options? Because there are a couple of things you can do. One is basically, we can say, all right, we're going to go back and we're going to basically redo it because it wasn't made the specifications that needs to be done. Obviously, if that happens, you know, there's always the potential, that's going to be a legal potential process that we have to figure out. Right now, both Owens and Delta Three Engineering have been very willing to work to try to figure out a correction. Part of the problem is pickleball courts are still relatively new. So there is not a expert out there that, you know, has enough backing or has enough experience that kind of knows what is the right solution. So that's one of the things that we're trying to figure out is the most recent development that has taken place is Delta Three has brought in kind of a consultant from the Milwaukee area, and they actually just, I believe about a week or two ago, with Bob, kind of walked through the entire pickleball court, looked at all the areas. And that individual is basically going to be giving to Delta Three a kind of report and synopsis of, here's my findings, here's what I think, and here are the firms that I would recommend that essentially you can bring in to possibly correct some of these issues and kind of give us some options. One of them is potentially, you know, can they go back and either resurface it so that it takes care of kind of these deviations or dips? The other option might be just having to look at, okay, if that is not a, if the cost to do that is going to be cost prohibitive, then we need to start thinking about, you know, every five to seven years is kind of the recommendation of when you should be resurfacing these courts. That's going to be a conversation of if we can't, you know, come to a solution that makes sense, do we look at the long term and everybody kind of considers what needs to be done? Owens, Delta Three, all kind of combines into that. So there's a lot of conversations going on. Essentially, what we're trying to do right now is we want to bring in somebody that can either correct the problem or give us potential solutions, because a lot of these firms are in larger cities. We're talking Chicago, you know, some of those big areas where they're doing lots of pickleball courts. This is something that, you know, for Wisconsin, pickleball ports are still relatively new as far as, you know, firms that are coming in. So we're kind of learning as we go. So that's kind of, I think I tried to answer most of the questions there. Did I miss anything?
So Todd, the pickleball courts were built by the city.
Right.
The city
Okay, the city took
The city took that project from the start. That's, that's what you wanted to know, right?
I just want to make sure we weren't handed something that was
No, the city took the project from the start, and right now the courts are not to the specifications that were in the contract.
Okay, thank you. That explains it.
Okay. Any other, okay, so we were down to zoning board of appeals, I believe. Todd, anything?
Nothing. I guess a situation where two people wanted, one wanted to sell property to the other, is mutually agreed upon. Again, we have city ordinances that just didn't seem to make sense with what these people wanted. It didn't seem unreasonable, didn't seem like it would harm any of the neighborhood. The appeal was granted.
Okay. Police and Fire Commission, Kathy?
Nothing to add.
Okay, there are other reports in your packet where the Water and Sewer Financial Report for August, the Airport Financial Report for August, a report from the Task Force on Inclusion, Diversity and Equity. Anything particular you want to mention? Adam?
Nope, I think everything in there is kind of what they're working on.
Okay, Department Progress Reports. Anybody with questions on any of those? Ken?
Question on one. And it's West Main Street covert, and I read here that there has been minimal work, liquidated damages are being assessed against work completed, and staff are consulting with the city attorney regarding further future steps to be taken. So could you explain what's going on here?
Well, as most people can see, there's not much going on. Every two weeks, we have a progress meeting with the, with the contractor. He'll come in for a day or two and do a little bit of work. And then for many and varied reasons, he says that he cannot come in and do work. And so our contract has what is called liquidated damages of a thousand dollars a day from the original completion time date of August 26th. And so they, those liquidated damages will come off of payments when the city sends their first payment to these people. We have not yet. If we get to a point where we believe that cannot or will not complete their performance, we have a performance bond and the bonding company will be required to get us a new contractor to, but for the price that was bid.
So any idea as to how soon that project will be worked on and completed?
As I said, we had a, we had a we had a progress meeting Thursday last week. He had a couple of the days that he said he was going to be working between Thursday and today and not show up. So I'm I'm not sure where we need to go. But I'm in, we're in contact with the attorney to determine when we go from liquidated damage to use of the performance bond.
Okay, thank you.
Question for you. Does he still have his digger out there and other equipment in the roadway?
Yep.
Why don't we go maybe in another direction? How about we just decide that this project's done? We confiscate the equipment and we lock it up, including all the property out there. Let's fill in the hole, be done with it that year, and let's just pursue this in a civil manner. You know, again, we keep the stuff until we figure out what's going on.
Perhaps we We need to work through the city attorney to make sure that whatever we're doing is meets Wisconsin law and
Declare the, the street needing to be opened again, let's again, remove all the equipment, let's get it locked up where it's safe. Unless, of course, one of the banks own it. At this point, I guess we'll have to give it back, but there is another direction we can go. I think we need to be maybe a little more decisive with this fellow. That's all, just a suggestion.
Who put in the water service? The water sewer main that was replaced. Who did that work?
The, there was water main that was installed, and that was done by this contractor, Dane County Contracting. So they did, in fact, do some work and as part of the contract. As I said before, we have not made any payments as of yet, and when we do, we will deduct the liquidated damages from it. So yes, they took three days to do a job that probably should have taken only one, but they did that. And and they're brand new water main connection at Preston Drive.
Okay, any other questions on the Department Progress Reports? Any other questions, Ken? Lynn, any questions on product? Todd, any other question?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Kathy? Jason? Okay. Then let's go to the action portion of our agenda, which is the adoption of the comprehensive CIP. And
Yeah, so essentially what we're looking for tonight is for the council to officially adopt the 2023 to 2027 CIP. And that way then what we can do is actually get you an official hard copy version for every single council member. Again, this has been a process that we kind of kickstarted last year, and this is kind of the continuation of it and something that we want to continue doing every year to year. Because as we've heard from kind of, you know, municipal advisor candidate today, your five-year strategic, you know, kind of capital improvement plan is important. Now, the big thing I want to stress, and I've been stressing every meeting, is this is a plan. This is not by voting to adopt this, this does not mean you are guaranteeing that everything in here is going to be funded or that you are committing any resources to this. What this is, is this essentially is our kind of, it's our budgetary and capital working document. What we do then is we take this information next, and that's where Nicola and I then kind of start working with the department directors on getting down to the nitty gritty and going, okay, this is what we have in our plan. Now comes the reality portion, where can we actually do this into the budget and what is it? That is what is kind of going to be the next step here in the process where I believe October 4th, if I remember right. That is what is kind of going to be the next step here in the process where I believe October 4th, if I remember right, is when we have our special meeting and that's where I'll be coming in front of you with kind of the overview showing you, okay, here's what was in the plan. Here is essentially some options and scenarios. Here is what we look at, you know, where we can fund, what we think we can fund. And either maybe we can do all of it. Probably not knowing kind of what the needs are for ours as a municipality and everybody else. But again, what this plan really shows is every department really kind of invested some time and looked at, okay, in five years, here's everything that, you know, we should be doing and also would like to be doing to continually, you know, run the day-to-day services of the city, but also look at ways to improve it. The plan then kind of showcases opportunities. There's either ways that things could be funded by tax levy, things that may be funded by debt, things that could be funded by grant or grant opportunities. What we use this plan for then is future conversations when we're talking about DNR grants, tap grants, other grant opportunities that are out there. These are, uh, this is a valuable tool that is used because it showcases that as a city, we're looking at those items into the future. We're planning for roads, we're planning for parks, we're planning for, you know, road replacements, street replacements, you know, vehicles, et cetera. The sky's the limit. And that way it allows us when we're going after some of those appropriations or grants, the ability to showcase, we are thinking about this. It also, also keeps in our minds things that we should be doing. So if we can't fund something because of either budgetary restraints or, you know, other items kind of pop up to the list, it continually makes sure that those don't drop and we just forget about it and then in five years go, we're, we're supposed to be doing that? Oh yeah, here it is. So again, I've met with a couple of different council members and kind of some questions and answering that over the process, but what we're looking for tonight is essentially the adoption of this plan. We'll then put the finishing touches on it. I'll work with our city manager intern Carol, who did a great job in kind of putting all this together. And again, great job with all the department heads and kind of really taking a deep dive into looking at this. I know the numbers in there are scary. They're not meant to scare anybody, but it's just meant to bring awareness of kind of things that we can use when we're talking to the league of municipalities, when we're talking to our legislators and show them, hey, look at all this that we're trying to do and here's where we are. So, you know, it kind of puts in the forefront, you know, any help that we can get from grants or other sources. We need it, but at least this kind of throws in the plan and showcases things that we want to try to do in the.
Okay, anybody with questions that they want to pose? Kathy?
Just, it's probably obvious, but I still have to ask it. The, the rating system, the one, two, three, four, five.
Yes.
There were some of them that seemed to really race to the top as far as being critically needed. I'm only assuming that those will, I mean, if, especially if it's anything safety related, that that's going to be float to the top.
Right. So that's always the intention is that when you see something in there that is critical, it's, it's definitely a need. Now, again, are we going to be able to fund that? It depends. It depends on how much funding sources we have. But that's something that I do intend to kind of bring forward to you here on the fourth is to kind of showcase, okay, here's all the, and again, here was the rating system. So you can kind of see that and understand even if it is a five, it, it's going to depend on the budgetary ability. So we're going to try to, you know, check off as many of those fives as we can. But if we can't, then that's just kind of, it just, again, it kind of keeps your eyes open to go, okay, that was a five in, you know, we've seen this item now for four years and it's always been in that five range. We need to tackle this now.
Hey, other questions?
Is it okay to ask specific questions?
Yeah.
Okay. I just noted that I, I wasn't aware that the city garage's roof had been damaged. And I did note that in here, looks like a substantial amount of money. Is there, do we have a long-range plan for replacing that building? As it obviously needs it alone, the color is enough to want to replace it.
As a matter of fact, yes. And, and that's, that's one of the, uh, that's one of the trade-offs that, that we as staff and you as council are going to need to kind of look at is, you know, that building was built in, I believe, 1969 pole, pole building. The roof was redone. It embarrasses me that I, but it was 99 when we did that. It's about a 20-year roof. This last year it was damaged and we've basically, you know, just kind of done some, some basic repairs so that stops leaking. So most of the time, but the question becomes, do we put in a lot of money in 2023 to do a full roof repair? Or do we promise to replace this building in say 26 or 27?
It is the structure underneath, I guess the facade of the building, the original metal structure, because I believe it's all, it's all steel or iron, right? Any way of reusing that or using that and building on an addition? And then reskinning the entire building, including insulation, heating, electrical, whatever needs to be done. Any way to stay at that location? I guess since we have our fuel issues down there, we have a lot of things going on down there that are still usable.
I mean, those would be the things to review, but we do have, if you do replace that building, we would need to make upgrades for for OSHA and safety issues for for restrooms and, and facilities for, for the workers and, and things of this nature. And you also brought up the HVAC and some of the other systems inside, you know? Those are some of the concerns that we would have, you know, do we, do we put a roof on there and push the replacement off for another 10-plus years or do we, or do we defer, or do we limp along with the roof and, and replace it sooner?
So we're talking about substantial plumbing, then also you're talking about iWash stations and that sort of thing, bathrooms, the whole nine yards.
All of it.
Right. Thank you. And it looks like you all have done a lot of work on these and the explanations are great. It's nice, a nice, easy read. Thank you.
Matt?
My question is replacement of signage that is destroyed or stolen, whatever. Is that listed anywhere under CIP or are you putting it underneath maintenance?
No, so that's.
It's an operational.
That's an operational cost. So that would be when you're looking at the budget, either it would come out of repairs and maintenance or particularly it would be a department's outlay account is more than likely where that would come out of.
And how much money are we?
It varies, it varies from department.
Due to signage.
I mean, to, and how many?
It's a yearly thing.
Yeah. We, uh, we typically do around 10 to 12,000 a year for our signs. We have over 3,600 street signs in Platteville and we, due to federal requirements for our major street signs, you know, stop signs and things like that, we need to replace them every 10 years. So we roughly replace one sign a day. Equivalent.
And it's not because the sign isn't there.
No.
No, it's because it's a replacement.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's the replacement process. Now, as, as a there are people in this community who like to have signs in their rooms and wherever. And so that number goes up.
I thought it might be the cost of the sign might be accumulated together to make more than 10,000 and, and go under CIP.
That's, that's a discussion that we would need to work with.
Generally, we try to keep CIP to items that have value, not just in individual part, not combined as individual parts, but, but the, the whole having a value of greater than 10,000 and a, and a service life greater than three years. So, um, so, you know, like, just like buying a desktop computer, you know, we would not make that a CIP if we bought 20 desktop computers because each one individually would not be worth $10,000.
But I see some items here are 10,000, so such as contingency and you put them under CIP. By the way, that was my question. How to make it tougher to take down the sign.
Maybe even tougher to take off a manhole cover. Not that that would happen.
Right.
Okay, uh, any other questions? I'm assuming that there is not one vehicle or one thing in here that's an electric vehicle.
Not as of yet, no. That's some of the conversations that obviously we are going to start looking at. You know, as, let's face it, it's coming. So it's a matter of we need to start planning for that. So in the next five years, would I anticipate that we will be looking at that? Probably not. But I think you're making a good point is that if you consider in the next, you know, as we get into past, you know, 2030 and start to get that 2030 to 2035 range, it's going to become more of a conversation. So I think as a city, you know, that's one of the things that we've been talking about that I think with one of our goals that we would be looking to set is in 2023. Starting to think about that as a, as citywide is looking at, you know, what potentially do we need to be looking at as being prepared? Because we know that there's more and more, you know, the larger municipalities are going to that. So sooner or later it is going to trickle down to everybody else. So we need to start being prepared, thinking about those questions.
Well, I do want to point out that we are on a major route that has been designated now as an electric vehicle route. So 151 has now been designated by the DOT as an electric vehicle route. And so if we want to, if we want to be different, if we want to be, we should be thinking of this sooner rather than later. Okay, folks, any other questions on the CIP? Again, this is a plan. It is not a budget document. It is a planning document. If there are no questions, this is the one item on our action agenda tonight. So if someone has.
I will move to approve the city of Platteville 23, 2027 capital improvement plan.
I can.
All right, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Jason to adopt the comprehensive CIP for 2023 to 2027. Candace will vote. Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot? Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move into the information and discussion part of our agenda tonight. The first item on that agenda is the DNR stewardship grant.
Thank you. We, uh, we submitted a request to the Department of Transportation for transportation alternative program grants that would have been 80/20 grants for trails. We also submitted a grant to the DNR. They would then maxed out at a 50/50 grant for trails. The intention was that if we got both the DNR and the DOT grants, then they would match each other and there would be no local match. However, the DOT grants did not come through. So now the only grants available for these two trails are DNR grants for the, what we're calling the Mountview Park Trail from the, from the PCA trail going up through Mountview Park and up past ferries to, to Fairfield Drive. And the other one is our Main Street Trail Connection. That's from the dog park up to East Main Street by the skate park. So these would be maxed out at 50/50. Due to inflation, the, both, uh, both projects came in a little bit higher than normal than what we had originally submitted for DNR grants. We feel that we can probably scale back the Main Street back to the original. So, but it's still for the Mountview, it would be DNR grant is maxed at 845,125 under this revised budget that would make the city's responsibility a little over 1.4 million dollars. One of the things that, that we've looked at are different options. We're calling project one, if you will, the Mountview Park Trail. So option one A is the original estimate. Option one B removes the lighting. Option one C puts the lighting back in, but removes the bridge. Option D removes both the lighting and the bridge. And so you have all the different options here and what, what we have. And then the second trail being the Main Street Trail Connection. And then option two B would be no lighting. Option two C, in the original, we had proposed an expansion of the parking lot down by the dog park to handle the people who would be getting on and using this trail. That, that's the, that's the reason that we put in the grant request. We all know that other people will probably use the parking lot expansion. So option two C would have lighting, but no parking lot expansion. And two D is no lighting and no parking lot expansion. So there's the difference in costs, the difference in, in the city shares and the DNR shares. One of the issues that has, that has come up is in our, in all of the option ones, we're still showing roaster pile repairs that are estimated at $175,000. I have gone back to DNR and asked them what sorts of programs, other programs they may have to assist with these repairs. Brownfield remediations, mining remediations and all like that. And to date, we have not been successful in finding any additional monies for that. 175,000 is just that, an estimate based on, you know, cleaning up where the, where the trail would be and to remediate the, the roaster pile and cap it again so that it won't leak out again. Though, there may be other, there may be cases where depending on what the DNR will allow, there may be other ways to reduce those costs. Or they may say that, no, we have to do even more. But right now 175 is, is the estimate. So that's, that's what we have. You know, we can look at, we have representatives from the PCA here. You know, there could be you know, ways to work with them to fundraise or do other things.
Okay, so I have three people who have registered tonight about this project. So first of all, Bob Hunthausen, you have talked, you have said you would like to speak tonight.
Thanks for having me here tonight. Appreciate it. My name is Bob Hunthausen. I'm the president of PCA, which is an acronym for the Platteville Community Arboretum. That's kind of a fancy way of saying the, the trail that is along the Roundtree Branch Corridor through, through Platteville. And for those council members that are not 100% familiar with PCA, I'd kind of like to tell you what, what we do and what we're about to start with. So PCA was established in 2004 as a nonprofit organization whose mission is to connect the Platteville community to the Rand, Roundtree Branch Corridor. through recreation, conservation, and environmental education. In partnership with the city and multiple community organizations, PCA was instrumental in helping fundraise and building the 3.1 mile paved and lit trail along the Roundtree Branch Stream Corridor. We have four trail maintenance crews who work during the season, which runs from late March to mid-November probably, who work two hours a week on the trail, cleaning, scraping up mud after floods and, and removing invasive species. And one of our goals is to restore the natural habitat on the trail. We have multiple gardening teams that maintain 12 different garden plots along the trail and are planted with native species and wildflowers. We have five committees, an executive board, and a board of directors who do much of the behind the scenes work to guide decision-making, put on events, raise funds, and keep the organization running smoothly. PCA also has two part-time paid volunteer coordinators because we have over 50 volunteers that work on the trail regularly. PCA has an annual commitment to the city to match trail repair for work of up to $2,500 annually. And we have an annual expense budget of around $55,000. And we, we currently have over 500 donor supporters. We regularly fundraise for our, for our budget and we're supported by our local business community who, who donate to us budgeted annually. It's, it's a very nice program. In 2021, our core of volunteers contributed to over 3,000 service hours on and off the trail. This included 150 new volunteers who helped on the trail and at other PCA events. We regularly get groups from the university, local service groups. In fact, for anybody who's interested this Saturday from nine to 11, we're honoring National Service Day. Kiwanis, Quota Club, and Building Platteville and Rotary are all working on the trail this Saturday. So we, we bring folks together quite a bit. In 2021 and early '22, the community helped us fundraise $25,000 for a new shed to house all our equipment and, and our volunteer tools. And the community also helped us fundraise 15,000 for a new John Deere Gator. So last year, we cleared about one and a half miles of trailside of invasive honeysuckle and shrubs. And we spread about 15 pounds of native seeds along the trail. Goes all along with our ecological mission of, of restoring the trail and, and the river corridor to its natural state. We, we also provide educational events, bird watching, native species planting and all kinds of things like that. And we had 120 people, different people attend our seminars last year. So I'm representing PCA here tonight because PCA has a long-term goal or vision for trail expansion around Platteville. PCI, PCA here tonight, we're, we, we got our executive board and our board together and we voted and we would like to step up and hopefully in partnership with Inspiring Community and the city to encourage you guys to accept the DNR grant that's on the table. PCA is willing to facilitate a steering committee, which we've already begun recruiting individuals for. We have members of our board on the, on the steering committee already and we have community members that have accepted, accepted as well. We'd also like to help the city develop the scope for what ends up being the actual project and help provide information and advocate for additional grant money or matching funds, which may include speaking with our legislatures. We would also like to offer at least the steering committee to be a possible public arm of, of additional fundraising if needed. So PCA has also, so you know more about our sustainability and our plan to be here for a while. We have built a $200,000 endowment that we increase every year through fundraising campaigns. And the purpose of that endowment currently is to make sure that we have those funds to match the city repair of the trail and also to pay our part-time volunteer coordinators. So I mention these things because I, you know, I like to point out the credibility of PCA and what, what the group in partnership with the community has accomplished and, and again, encourage the council to strongly consider accepting our help and supporting the grant going forward for trail expansion. So be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, questions of Bob?
I say thank you. Our trails are beautiful and it's one of the, the neatest things we ever think in the city. Exercise and family time, everything. It's really kind of a neat thing.
Yeah, I think if you speak with anybody that is involved with PCA, you will realize how proud of it we are. So thank you for saying that.
And you have a question? Members of your board here tonight, Bob?
Yeah, Diane Gents from Heartland Credit Union is our treasurer. Robin Fatsinger is our membership drive person and also heads up our marketing committee. And Gene Weber, of course, is, is the heart and soul of PCA. And I think tonight he's here representing Inspiring Community, actually. So.
Okay, anybody else with questions?
I had one. In terms of like the PCA and what, what they're looking for in terms of the, the project, out of all of the options, what would PCA want to have or want to see done, like the full mount? Or, or what are you thinking that?
Yeah, I appreciate. Thanks for asking that, Jason. And I also, you gave me the opportunity to mention one more thing that I forgot. It's pretty important. PCA is offering as well to accept the maintenance on the new trail expansion. Okay, maybe not to the level of all the invasive species and restoring the environment and things like that, but for sure, keeping up the trails and, and mowing them and things like that. Jason, to Todd's comment there, we're pretty proud of, of the trail that is currently exists. We'd, we'd love to see trail expansion that surrounds the city and is, is to that level. We also understand that the financial burden of the city is, you know, is steep and that may not be the case, but we're, we'd like to support the full, the full boat if possible.
But you have seen the alternatives.
Yeah.
And no lights.
Yeah. And I, and I, you know, I, I kind of think our way of thinking is, you know, i- if you, if you build it, they'll come. And if we, if we build a portion of these trails, even if it's without lighting or parking lot expansions or, or a bridge or whatever it is, that just means that future grants down the road and things like that, we could, those are things we could add. So I think getting it going is, makes sense.
Other questions of Bob? Otherwise, Gene Weber has also registered to speak.
Bob, if, since the pool is closed now, if you'd take me up on a tour of the trail and our facilities, I'd, I'd greatly appreciate it.
I think that was a public invitation.
Yeah. Hard to say, no, no.
Good evening. I am Gene Weber and I live at 1285 Union Street here in Platteville. I'm here tonight representing Inspiring Community and really requesting the council to delay action on whether to accept the $1.2 million DNR award for a period of time. We want to see if together with PCA, we can find ways not involving city funding to enable our local taxpayers the opportunity to get some of their taxes back in the form of this $1.2 million award. And the benefit from the trail additions, of course. As you have seen over several years now, our Inspiring Community team has been successful in developing and supporting resourceful steering committees. Resourceful steering committees who have generated funds from multi various resources enabling the David Candy Roundtree Branch Trail, the Library Project, Nutrition World Outdoor Fitness, Roski Center, the Sanders Trying Pickleball Facility, and the currently in process Platteville Inclusive Playground. We are simply asking that you wait a while for your community to conduct our due diligence and report back to you when we have completed that. Thank you for your time and all you do for Platteville, enabling us together to bring amenities to Platteville, to attract talented workforce for our businesses in this challenging time, more homeowner taxpayers and visitors to support our local businesses. You do make a difference with your own significant volunteerism. It's really all I've got to say. We're just asking you to give Inspiring Community, PCA, and really your community a little bit of time to do due diligence and do what you have seen us do best in the community. Any questions?
Okay, questions of Gene?
What is the time limit on accepting, whether or not we accept the grant?
It's very soon. I don't have a actual date. I've been working with our DNR rep to, to get extensions, but I'm, I'm thinking that it's coming up really quickly. I, I don't, I, I've not been able to pin down a, an actual date on this. So I've, I will continue to ask and, and keep asking for slight delays, but at some point in time, they're going to have to, we're going to end up having to fish at bait on this because they have all these other communities that they would allow to have this money.
So Gene, do you think? Until October? What are you thinking?
I don't know that we have a magic date. If you folks do, we need to know that. A question I would ask Howard is, assuming in the end we have enough resources to get the grant, when does it have to be spent by?
The, the word that I had was June 30th, 2024. But with reasonable, with reasonable request, we can add another year to that. So now, if, if we work together with DNR, I think it would be reasonable to get the additional year, you know, to June 30th, 2025 in order to, you know, if we need to space out, you know, appropriations or space out match, local match or anything like this. But these are, this is technically a reimbursement. This is technically a reimbursement award. So we end up putting the money in upfront and then they pay us back at the end.
The only reason for asking that question, obviously, is so the council people are aware that this really would need to be completed in 2024 or maybe 2025. But what we're really asking here tonight, give us a little time to see what we can come back to you with that makes this far more practical for the Platteville taxpayer and the city council.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Gene. Robin Fatsinger had registered in favor of the trail improvement, but did not want to speak. The next, then I guess we're done. Has anybody else got questions on this item?
Just a direct question to Adam and Nick. Can we afford this? What can we afford right now? What's your, your long range look at this situation that, you know, what's your feelings here?
I mean, we'll certainly have to come back with options. So if we can figure out what, you know, obviously it's kind of Gene's point, the more true assistance we're aware of, obviously decreases the cost that's going to go to the taxpayer. But it is going to be a, you know, decision that we're going to probably provide you guys with options. And as a council, you'll have to determine, you know, right now, I would tell you if we were doing this project, you're possibly, you know, do we have almost $2 million? No. So the only way, if you ask, if we had, if the decision was to fund that, we're telling you, you're probably borrowing because that's the only financial way that we could do that. You know, the conversation is going to be is, you know, in the past, we have funded some trail projects through CIP. That's going to be a consideration. You know, there's about 1.2 to $4 million every year we do in roads. That's going to be a conversation for the council is, you know, are you going to throw it into that and do less roads? Maybe. That depends. So, you know, unfortunately, if you were asking me today, Todd, the only way I would say it's funded is you'd probably have to borrow it, which.
Or somebody has to make a gift.
Or somebody's got to make a, yeah. If you know somebody that's got $2 million, that person, I think, who was in southwest Wisconsin that has the million dollar lottery ticket out there, if you know who that is, have him give it to us. We're closer.
You mean, you didn't buy that?
I did not. I tried, but.
Okay. Other question? Then we'll move on to the next item, which is Resolution 22, authorizing representation for Environmental Improvement Fund, WWTF Emergency Generator Upgrade.
Sure. This is for wastewater treatment facility. We have had our emergency generator in the, in the CIP for a while. It is in the process of being bid right now. What this does is it will allow the city manager to submit for additional financial assistance from the Environmental Improvement Fund that would allow us to have reduced interest loans or what we call, what the DNR calls principal forgiven loans. In other words, grants for the project. With design and construction, the, the project will be close to $2 million over three years. And part of that is because of supply chain. We, we don't expect to see the actual generator until late spring, early summer of 2024. And the final completion in fall of 2024. So the, the issue here is that the cycle. Uh, so the, the issue here is that the cycle, in order to be eligible for this, we need to put the paperwork in by September thirtieth of this year to be eligible for this. So we're asking that this be looked at now and then approved hopefully at the next meeting on the twenty-seventh so that we can submit that to this, uh, to the state. And this just says that the city manager can sign all, all the documents.
So Howard, is this a way, a long way of you're saying that in this case, we're going to borrow from this other area instead of going out and getting a bond, having borrowing through like, uh, Justin? Is that what this is? Is that really what you're trying to say?
It gives us.
Just an alternative way to get.
It's an, it's an alternative borrowing source for water and sewer. And depending on many different factors, it could be as low as fifty-five percent of market rate. What Justin could get on the bond market.
Could be the interest rate could be that much lower.
To be that much lower.
Okay.
And even part of it could be, uh,
forgiven.
Forgiven as a grant.
Okay.
So.
Does anybody have questions? That's a long way of saying.
Got options.
A different place to borrow money and maybe get, get some. Okay. If anybody has questions on this, uh, let, uh, Adam know, uh, prior to the next meeting. Uh, the next one is declaring the official intent to reimburse expenditures. I think this has to do with the prior resolution.
Correct. It, they go together. And what this says is that, if you pass this resolution, it says that we intend to reimburse current expenditures for like our design and, and things like that with funds from this other source. So that when we pay, when we're paying for design and other related services, that'll, that can be part of the same borrowing source.
So money we're spending now can be included in the grant.
Yes. Yep. Very similar to how we do this, just as part of it, when we work with our municipal advisors, sometimes we have that resolution that we ask the council to pass, which is, okay, we may be needing to expend something before we actually have the funds. That's all it is.
Any questions on that?
I, I have a question. This the name of the emergency generator. It's in, is it, do we have one? This one is, needs to be replaced. Is it one of those things where it's mandated, it's replaced every so many years or have we been having issues with it?
Fortunately, we have not had issues with it. It was, it was, uh, installed back in the early nineteen eighties. So it's about forty years old. Um, and, and under the rules of that time period, it only operates a portion of the plant. It, it basically just pumps water around the plant. It doesn't, uh, it doesn't power the offices with the, uh, control data computers. It doesn't power, uh, any of the other, um, treatment processes. It just basically keeps the water flowing through the plant. Uh, so what this would do is, uh, replace the old generator and upgrade it and upsize it so that it will do, in fact, run the entire plant. The one that we have right now worked like a champ when we had the tornado. Um, the power was out down there for, I don't know, eight to twelve hours. And it worked like a champ, but all it did was just move the water through.
And maybe when it was put in the nineteen eighty, it might have run most stuff because there probably weren't all these computers. Okay, um, that ends the information and discussion items on our agenda. The next part of our agenda is a closed session per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eight-five, parent one, parent E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And the topic is the honor. So I would take a motion to go to closed session. Uh, there is no action slated in closed session. It would be a discussion only. So we do not intend to return to open session and either take action or announce action. So, uh, we would go to closed session and then adjourn of, to open session and, um, adjourn the meeting. So.
Moved.
Okay. I have a motion, uh, by Jason and a second by Todd. I sized head. Uh, Candace will vote.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.